All right, we will call this meeting to order then. Welcome. This is the Kaysville City Planning Commission, May 8, 2025. First item on our agenda, Declaration of Conflict of Interest from the Commissioners. Seeing done, we will move immediately into item number three on the agenda. Consideration of a rezon application for 13 West, 950 North from RA to LI.
Thank you Chair Packer. This item, the rezon, was continued from the April 24 Planning Commission meeting, after the Commission requested that the applicant and staff work together to both draft a development agreement to address several concerns raised during discussion and to provide a site plan outlining potential layouts for the uses. I'll briefly cover the main components of the development agreement for the benefit of the Commission. The primary purpose of the development agreement was to restrict uses allowed in the LI zone that would be potentially incompatible with the nearby planned residential units. In the staff report, it does provide a strike through of which uses have been removed. So you can see from the permitted uses, we've eliminated utility substations and offices, as well as small tools and light metal products. And then from conditional uses, we've eliminated furniture and fixtures manufacturing, stone, clay, and glass products manufacturing, as well as fabricated metal product industries. And that was done in collaboration with the applicant to address some of the concerns that were raised. We also have provided a conceptual site plan of a potential layout for the proposed rezon, detailing some of the ideas that Mr. Holland had brought up in the previous meeting to give the Commission the clarity that they had requested prior. So with that in mind, and with that, those concerns addressed, staff is recommending approval of this rezon, given the addition of the development agreement, restricting the uses, and the addition of the conceptual site plan, as indicated with support from the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holland, do you want to add anything to the presentation at this point? Or I'm sure we might have some questions, but...
Yeah, if you have any questions, please.
Okay.
Chairman, can I ask that staff go back to the slide of deletions that were amended for the development agreement? Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, so discussion on the proposal as a stance, or questions for the applicant? But let's get into it.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I want to say thank you for the cooperation of, first of all, the site plan. It's really good to see a potential site plan. That helps give us a feel for where things are located. Thank you. So we're just talking about the left-hand side of the site, right? Okay. So I like the layout here. I think it's good. I think it keeps the busiest stuff farthest away from the neighbors. Well, I take that back. Those uses don't work except where they're at. But we really don't have residential that close on the other side, because I think we've got that kind of an open area there. But I did have a question, so thank you for the site plan, but I did have a question about the strike-throughs. And I'm just wondering if the applicant could indicate that this was, these items were determined through negotiation with the city, or suggested that these might be reflection of potential tenants? Or why were things stricken and others left in? I guess is my question.
Yeah. Phil Holland? Good question. I think there was a little bit of a tone a couple of weeks ago that, you know, the light industrial has, you know, it's industrial.
Heavier.
And what we tried to do is strike everything that was manufacturing-heavy, because that certainly is not our intent to do anything similar to that. And so, yeah, we worked with the, with city staff to discuss some of those uses. The LI actually, in comparison to the GC here in Kaysville City, the LI actually articulates better what the zone allows. GC really is a blank check to allow most things. But, yeah, we tried to strike out most of those manufacturing, if not all of them.
The heavier ones?
Yep.
Yeah, because I noticed that the most important uses that are proposed are at the bottom of the permitted use section, which is that retail, which is obviously the, that's the crown jewel there. I mean, that's the best use for that property. And I like the location of the warehousing, the manufacturing, that stuff on the back. I think that's great. So I was just curious about small tools and light metal products. We're just trying to limit the vibration, noise, smoke kind of thing, right? Because I think that's really critical at this location. You've got residents, you know, to the south, to the east, but they're shielded. It's really more to the north, those neighbors to the north, that I'm concerned about. But they should be buffered by the uses in front.
Yeah.
So my biggest concern actually isn't the heavy uses in the back. It would be if the proposal was for that whole site, it would be nothing but a big building that could be warehousing. Because I'd be thinking, well, then we're missing out on the retail. We're missing out on the, catching the cars coming down the road. So I like the layout. I like the site plan. I don't really have much of a concern about the list. As long as we have screened the heavy use, I'm a little worried about, number one, or excuse me, under-conditional. We're leaving in food, manufacturing, and processing. I come from a town that has a ton of food processing and manufacturing, and it's pretty heavy use, heavy water. I don't know, maybe it's just a break in bulk point for shipping of pre-manufactured products, but I've actually worked in some factories, potato factories and stuff like that.
Bring back the Clover Club?
Yeah, cheese. I've been up in Idaho. I mean, those towns are completely dependent on food. So I was just curious about that one, but...
Yeah.
I'm not asking you to tip your hand if you have a Kraft cheese place coming.
No, none of those.
Okay.
We were more anticipating, let's eliminate manufacturing out of this.
Okay. I don't mean to grill you. Thank you. Thank you for the enlightenment and the clarification.
Absolutely.
Really appreciate that.
If I may, I'm sorry, Mr. Holland, have you get your deep knee bends up and down again, but a couple of questions for you. I noticed that the, as conceptually drawn, there are no curb cuts. Is that by requirement? Is that still a possibility that if a user demanded that they had a cut to the west of Divide Drive? Is that a possibility?
UDOT, who I bought it from, has denied me any access other than Divide Drive.
I see. So that would be the access point?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Any, this predates me, but are the buildings next to the Pickler and Gigi Pip, are those 35 feet in height?
I think they might be a little less than that.
I think they're less, yeah. I would say.
So that could be potentially in this flex office retail use?
Could be. Yeah, I don't think we go to the full extent of 35 feet, which is allowed in either zone, I believe. But, yeah, I don't anticipate that we'd need that full 35.
So this isn't a layout for a retailer headquartered in Arkansas, but I assume you have other interested folks that...
Yep, we do. And this is very, I actually, there was a couple other concept plans that didn't make the list. But, yeah, this was just very conceptual. None of these actually mean anything, but they could be lightly. So we wanted to, and, you know, some C-stores require two acres, which would mean that it would take that entire frontage.
Yes.
What's shown is about an acre. And there are those uses as well, but very conceptual, just to show kind of laying out, parking, access points.
And the 4.8 acres is the remainder that were...
Yes.
Okay, after the residential to the east.
Right.
Thank you very much.
So my question is, it doesn't look like there's limits on size of buildings as far So all that I see is no building or structure can, or combination of such shall cover more than 70% of the total lot area. And we're talking the total lot of the light industrial side. So it could not be one massive Walmart. It couldn't be one giant piece, or could it?
I have a couple of answers. I'm going to try to, so it can't occupy more than the 70%. I think that's in our development agreement, and then that's part of the LI zone as well. But, yeah, I don't anticipate us doing an entire massive flex building here that would cover the entire site. Because I agree, one of the reasons I bought it is because of its, now I'm going to go into the economics of it. I think it'll answer your question. But the retail land is a lot more valuable than the flex land for all of us, city included. And so, yeah, I want as much retail as possible. And the flex in the back is, I think that's shown as like a 30,000 square foot building. So, yeah, I don't think that my goal is to maximize everything on that site.
Yeah. Which I think is appealing just for the nature of that lot, just so that it's more uses, more, you know, opportunities, smaller buildings, less of a eyesore, in my opinion.
Yeah.
I think the, just one more comment. I think the building in the back on the south is really smart there, because let's say it's built at the absolute maximum height. There's a real nice buffer there already, a distance buffer with the creek, right? And so to any homes, so that building on the backside of it, what it does for those people to the south is, it's really going to block all that light from the retail use, especially if there's a, I don't know if 24-hour use is allowed, or if that's being proposed, but let's say you had a gas station that was open 24 hours there. Those are really brightly illuminated, and that is going to, that building in the back will help screen that to the south. And then, of course, if the lighting plan is done well, it really needs to be done mostly for the people to the east, you know, in three directions, but it'll naturally be blocked by that building in the back. So that, I think that's an advantageous layout.
Yeah, I like how it's laid out there. I like how it's laid out with that in the back, and that can kind of be backdrop, and it's not in anybody's face necessarily.
Yeah. And those buildings, usually at night, there's just minimal, it's a light over the door, the man door, or, you know, a wall wash down, which is, and it can be set on a timer. So lighting is a really huge concern for me, as somebody who's looked at a lot of these, and that can really make or break the uses around it. It can make it a great neighbor, or a really frustrating, so. I think you've answered my concerns, so I was the one that had the most last time. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, thank you. I, from my point of view, I really like what's been brought, and I think a lot of our questions have been answered. Appreciate all the work that's been added to what the original proposal. I think you guys have asked the questions that I had, so.
We're not in public hearing mode tonight, are we?
No.
We closed that last time.
For this item, yes.
Would it be inappropriate to make a motion at this point, Mr. Chairman?
I'm comfortable with it.
I'd like to make a motion then on this item, that we recommend approval, as per the staff recommendation, on item number three. And recognizing, number one, that the applicant has come back with the items that were requested by the Planning Commission last time, with a layout, and also a development agreement, and that the majority of all of those concerns that we raised last time have been addressed. I think the only thing that is still hanging out there is, you know, the traffic study, and how do we get people to cross the street there? I think there's some work to be done there, but that crossing is going to be further to the east, really kind of off of this portion. So this part of the rezon, or this rezon, doesn't really have that as much. I think crossings will be done farther to the east, hopefully. So I think that, based on the recommendation of the staff, though, we should approve this. So there's my motion. Or was that clear as mud? It probably was pretty muddy. Motion to approve per staff recommendation. How's that?
We have a motion.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to recommend approval. Discussion on that motion?
I just, so I wasn't here for the initial, but I've read up all on it and taken a good look at it. To me, this is just, our plan talks about, you know, the potential of being some kind of commercial there. To me, the light industrial zone, it's almost unfortunate it has that name, because it's really more kind of like almost a heavier commercial zone. I don't see a lot of what you would normally call industrial that would go in there. And the things that I think might approach that with the development agreement, it strikes some of those out. And to me, that's, it's a pretty appropriate location. It's got a lot of buffering around it. When you look to the south and to the east, you do have some homes, but there is a church adjacent to it to the east. And then, of course, the street to the north and the highway to the west. To me, it seems like it fits pretty well. It would fit pretty well.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I mean, you look at the Smiths and the shops around it, and that's his own light industrial. And I don't know what, if anything, would need to be different if it were changed to commercial, but I agree, I feel like this is a good fit. Any other discussion or comments? Should we start with a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. That will go to City Council sometime in the future.
June 5.
June 5. Very good. We will move on then to Agenda Item Number Four. This is a rezon request and public hearing for rezon for 388 North Angel, from an R-114 single-family residential to a general commercial for applicant Drew Hill.
All right, thank you Chair Packer, Planning Commission. It's nice to be with you this evening. As mentioned, this is a rezon application that came in for the property addressed at 388 North Angel Street. This is an aerial shot of the area and the neighborhood. The property we're speaking about is highlighted in blue. I will next take you to the zoning map that just shows the property highlighted in that red oval. And as you can tell, everything surrounding this is in the neighborhood, residential neighborhood area. There is some general commercial south of the property at the intersection of 200 North and Angel Street. Everything else is either agricultural or residential. I'll now just get into talking about the general plan. One of the first things we look at when we have a rezon request that comes in, is we look at the future land use map. And that is kind of the first checkpoint. And the future land use map indicates this property is intended to stay residentially zoned. It also indicates, as I mentioned, that commercial area down at 200 North and Angel Street is to remain commercial as well. This is a bit of an awkward situation, the second time in my career that I've written a staff report where the general plan does not support the zone request. So I'll just go through the points of the general plan that essentially show opposition to this application. Chapter one of the general plan is our placemaking plan, and where the goals that I think intensely object to this rezon application are housed in that chapter one. But the first goal there, and this is one that ironically commonly when we have public hearings and people are opposed to the zone change, and residents come in and speak to the general plan, this is one actually that they commonly point to, which is that we should preserve and protect Kaysville's small-town atmosphere by limiting change in functioning neighborhoods and districts. So, and then it's specific to an objective that says we should preserve the single-family neighborhoods by restricting development to modules that essentially support the existing character of the neighborhood. So Goal One, Objective 1.1, just does not support this rezon application. Further in that chapter, Goal Six, says that we would look to preserve the established character of Kaysville, and doing that by continuing the established focus on single-family residential uses. And then Goal 10 of that same chapter says that we would look to ensure that commercial, civic, school, park, open space, industrial uses, et cetera, as residential uses are approved in a manner that meets the established land use vision and future needs. The future land use map is also in Chapter One. So I think Goal 10 is kind of strengthening the position that when we look to these rezones, we should look to that future land use map as well. In spite of some of the conversations I had with the applicant about concerns and the general plan not supporting the application, they chose to obviously submit the application anyway, and through those discussions volunteered to essentially come into the rezon with a development agreement. So the development agreement is crafted to try and mitigate, if this is approved, to mitigate any negative impacts that could potentially come to the neighborhood primarily. This is not, as was just mentioned in the prior agenda item, this is in a blank check. So this is very specific to the two businesses that would be allowed to be used on the property. The first is Hill Farm Swimming and Andrea West Design. Also put in the development agreement that we would limit height to 30 feet, which is what is allowed in the residential zones. Our commercial and light industrial zones allow up to 35 feet, and actually a conditional use permit for anything above 35 feet. So I don't think the intent was that they were going to have buildings added to the property, or that there would be additions to the existing buildings, but nevertheless, they wanted to make sure if that was approved, that this protection is in there. The, I am proposing that we would not allow any signage on this property. As the code is currently written, they could have a 30-foot-tall sign on the property, so we definitely did not want to bring that into this residential neighborhood. So this one foot, one square foot nameplate is what is allowed through the home occupation, so I felt like that was an appropriate provision in the development agreement. We also had some provisions there that the building and pool would be, and this would have to happen anyway, but that the building and, any buildings used for the business and the pool would have to be brought up to commercial building code. And that would have to be done prior to issuance of any business licenses, and that would have to go through the building permit process and inspections. They also wanted to ensure some safety with the pool, that it was covered when it was not in use, and that five-foot fence that is required through our code remain in place, and that fencing be maintained. And then, of course, the provision that there would need to be some off-street parking provided, which I think, given the uses that are proposed, I think the site can accommodate the off-street parking. So I, when I wrote the staff report, I wanted to kind of equally present both sides of this. So there has been a swim school that's been operating there on the site as a home occupation permit since, I think, 2018. Because the residence is no longer occupied, a home occupation permit just is not allowed. So the swim school, if that were, if this were to be rezoned, and the swim school would be able to continue there, if it's not rezoned, we'll have to work with the applicant, and they'll have to find another location to conduct the swim school if the residence is to remain vacant. The, so I just wanted to make that clear with the Planning Commission, that we do allow, in a residential zone, for swim schools to be operated through a conditional use permit, and that's through our home occupation code. But again, there does have to be somebody living at the residence for that to be a home occupation. The swim school could be conducted either, currently they're licensed under the major home B, or major home occupation B. And after they were granted the conditional use permit, the city added in the instructional home occupation permit, which that could also allow for anyone who was not the occupants of that premise to conduct the swim school. So there is a provision for that to happen, even if the owners of the swim school are not the residents of the property. Secondly, I wanted to just say that the interior design studio could also be allowed as a home occupation through our conditional use permit with our, it's 1726, but our home occupation code. So just wanted to fairly present that both of these uses could be allowed on that site if it was to continue as a residence. So the rezon to the commercial is not necessary for that. And then these last three things I wanted to just speak about, you know, land use and zoning, zone changes, those are considered legislative discretionary items. And as such, I don't often have concerns about precedence, because you take each site, even if it was across the street from each other, there may be some different types of characteristics or traits that would make one zone acceptable and another rezon maybe unacceptable. But in this instance, I do have concerns about setting a precedence of rezoning property in a very well-functioning residential neighborhood to general commercial. And as you have all learned, when we do speak to rezon applications, we like to look at what that area, you know, the character of the area looks like. So we do look at the zoning that exists. And the concern I have with the precedence is that if we rezon this as general commercial, that creep of additional general commercial could look more favorable. And again, because this is an established residential neighborhood, I think that is, you know, a concern that is worth discussing. Secondly, we also often hear in our public hearings about spot zoning, and I mentioned that in the staff... And I mentioned that in the staff report, but I think, you know, in the context of spot zoning, what you really want to look at is, is this an appropriate place for this type of zoning? And when you have, a lot of the times the comments in our public hearings are, it's generally against multifamily or townhomes, right? And so to me, I don't think having a residential use, whether it's single-family, right next to another residential use of townhomes is incompatible, but the spot zoning really is kind of meant to protect incompatible uses. Where you would just have a singular parcel in a sea of other zoned property that just doesn't fit or isn't compatible. So again, some of those concerns can be eliminated through the use of the development agreement. I think, given the state's focus on moderate-income housing and the housing supply, it's worth mentioning that if this is rezoned, we are taking a viable residential property out of the picture for a family to use. And of course, it's just one, but you know, that was something I wanted to just mention to the planning commission. And then I think for me, this is one of the things that I will be very interested to hear the discussion from the planning commission. But I think there are some defensible instances in which not following the general plan is wise. I just don't know if this is that. Right, these uses that are being proposed could be used if the prop, or they could be there if an owner was there, if the property was used residentially. This isn't bringing in a business to the city that's going to bolster our sales tax revenue or really increase the commercial property tax base. And so I think it's, it's wise for the planning commission to have the discussion of, you know, the general plan does not support this, given that, is this something that we would like to, to consider approving even with that opposition of the general plan? So I am recommending denial based on the fact that the general plan just does not support this rezone application. And I, with that, I would actually like to offer just a brief apology to the Hill family with that, because it feels very bad as staff to have a recommendation of denial. And that's certainly not something that is, is fun. But this is just, to me, where the facts point to. So nothing personal against the Hill family either. But with that, I know the applicant is here this evening, and I would love to answer any questions the commission may have. And the applicant is here as well for questions you have for them.
Thank you for that. Is that the, the best next thing to do is to hear from the applicant and then we'll open up the public hearing portion? So if the applicant's here, if you want to step forward and just state your name and tell us.
Yeah, my name's Drew Hill. I'm the one who put in the application. My dad's Brent. He's the owner of the home. Do you have any specific questions that you want me to go into? Or do you want me to just kind of give our reasoning for why we're going for the application? Reasoning?
Yeah, I think, go with that. And we'll, we'll have plenty of time to ask some questions.
All right. The, the main thing is, this home is, in my opinion, kind of a historical lands, landmark in, in West Kaysville. Obviously, I'm a little biased because I grew up there and have lived there for my entire life. I live just east of it. In fact, you can see my house on the, I'm just at the top of Peach Blossom there. So you see my driveway and my garage. So I'm only, you know, a few hundred yards away from, from the homes, what I call the homestead. And my sister, who runs the swimming lessons, is my next-door neighbor. So we're just, we're right there in, in the community as well. One of the things that happened is, a few years ago, my mom passed away. And this house has a lot of my mom's marks on it, her, her design and her input into it. And it's, it's kind of a legacy to her and my dad that they built together. And the original home was built in 1889, and the original brick's still on the home. And so in the idea of us ever doing anything as far as changing the landscape, changing the home, modifying it to become something that it's not right now, that's not the intention. We have zero desire to do anything but just keep it as what it is and be able to keep it that way. The reason I mentioned my mom passing away is because in a few years after she passed away, my dad remarried. And within the last year has, has moved out of the house. Again, part of that is, this was my parents' home, not my dad and, and, you know, someone else's home. And so they, they just didn't feel comfortable living there. So we, in the meantime, have decided to try and figure out a way that we can keep the property in our family and maintain it and feel like it's still kind of creating the legacy that it has been. You know, one of the things you mentioned, Melinda, was that you're worried that it might not match or keep up with the architecture of the area. But the reality of it is, the whole neighborhood was based off of the architecture of this home. And that's what the developer designed it with, with their intention in mind when they, when they started the development. So the setback off of Angel Street for all of those homes that sit on Angel Street is to match the fact that our home sits back off the street. That's why we have the, the open space on, on both sides of Angel Street there. The colorful homes, this is an old red brick home, you know, so the colorful homes that, that are in the community were, the idea was again to, to kind of match the, the architecture of the original home. The bottom line is, is that we went through a bunch of different ideas and thought processes of how we could maybe make this work. And does one of us want to live in the house? You know, I just built a new home. It's an amazing home. My wife and I, and our family and my sister did the same. My brother lives inside. Like, there's the option of us kind of living there just didn't really fit for where we're at in our lives right now. Turning it into, turning it over to another family as far as just renting it out, you know, doesn't seem like something that I want to do as far as having a bunch of other kids and, and family that maybe just doesn't look at it the same way that we do and have the same type of respect for it that we do. So that didn't really feel like something that we, we felt like might, might fit. And Andrea and Erin, Wes, they live just two doors down on Angel Street. And one day I thought, you know what? They keep things very nice inside their design business. And this would be a great spot where they could set up multiple rooms where they could showcase different design features. Obviously, they would want it to look nice and keep it clean and, and keep the integrity, the structure of the home so that they can, you know. And so it was just a, a thought. And as we started discussing a little bit more, we kept thinking, man, that, that could be a really great fit. That could be a really good thing for this. And so I approached the city and just said, hey, would, would this be an option? And in that process, I didn't realize what I was doing, but, you know, ended up getting the swimming license because we, no one lives in the house now. So the swimming license got revoked. Which was kind of a bummer, you know? Like just, it's been a business that we've run for a number of years and one, didn't even think twice about it. Wasn't, wasn't, anyway, the bottom line is, this is just a spot where, like I, like I, we said in the draft agreement, there's no intention of anything but Andrea West Design and Hill Farms Swimming to, to be the businesses that occupy this. If Andrea West Design were to ever move out, be happy to have this go right back to R14 residential zoning and explore our options again from that point. There's a, a number of parking stalls and, you know, all the other things that you could want for a small business like that that would keep cars off of the road. It's a low-traffic business that's run by appointment only with, you know, very limited, you know, customers and things like that on a, on a weekly basis. And then obviously, the, the swimming lessons is a six-week project during the summer that run from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM during that six-week period. And they run in 45-minute increments. And parents usually drop off, you know, drive in, drop their kids off, pick them up. And, and so that's what we're looking for. That's what we're trying to do. There's, I've kept, you know, Melinda kept asking, do you have a site plan? And I was like, yeah, well, I mean, that's the site plan. We're not changing anything. We don't want to adjust anything or, or anything, you know, add anything to it. It's just, we'd love to have Andrea West Design be able to occupy it and run her business out of that and be able to continue with swimming lessons if possible. So that's it.
All right. Thank you. We'll save any of our questions until after we have the public hearing portion. So let you sit down. Thank you. So we will open up the public hearing portion of this agenda item at this point. Anyone who is here to speak to this item is welcome to come forward. When you do, please state your name and.
Hi, I'm Steve Lyon. You going to time me? Thank you. I do need time. Thank you, Commissioner Sumacorn. I appreciate that.
We know you.
You do know me, Paul. Commissioner Allred. So I'm Steve Lyon. I am Kaysville resident. I would like to specifically address this. I drove by. I live in the neighborhood. I am disturbed by the fact that the city would even dare consider this. First, without a site plan. Secondly, without the fact, and the applicant just said this, well, if it doesn't work, we'll just take it back out of residential and put it back in residential. That dog don't hunt. I'm sorry. But I just worked in a city in Texas where we just spot-zoned all the time. This doesn't work. You're going to put yourself in a position as a city where you're going to put yourself in with a non-compliant or non-conforming use in the future. This is disturbing on several levels. Zoning is there to protect areas in the city to allow for similar uses. This allows also to protect neighborhoods so you get the traffic flows and the protections in the city so that we have similar uses. There's no compliant uses in the area. There isn't a corner on 200 North and Angel. And it's protected there and allowed there for eventual use for somebody to build a gas station or another commercial use. Commercial use here would not be appropriate, in my opinion. It's a great property. It would lend itself well, would have lent itself well to be allowed at some point, but not now. It is, it is a residential property, residential neighborhood. I'm also, also understand the applicant came with no site plan, also not any changes. I work for a city. We see this all the time. Changes meaning you're going to have to come up with a commercial code. You're going to have to come in for ADA standards. You're going to have to do all those things. That's at least a half million to $750,000 worth of changes to that property going from residential to general commercial zoning now. And I hope the resident applicant understands that. There are, there are changes that have to happen. And also the fact that there is no traffic study being done. I don't see, I don't even see a parking plan. Now you're going from a residential to a general commercial parking plan that will be required for that. I understand it's by appointment only, but now for an acreage of that site, you're going to have to do that. That is a cost on the applicant and it's also a burden on the neighborhood. I drive through all the time. I got kids who go down the junior high. That is going to burden the neighborhood in that nine to five hours. I just worry that by spot-zoning this, we are putting ourselves in a position as a city that's saying, the next home that says, oh, I can't afford my home or I want to do this, and we're going to allow it because now we have a compatible use. I worry about that. I, I appreciate the fact that they've tried to come up with a solution for their problem, but I do not think this is the right solution for this problem. I also want to say that the fact that we are taking housing while we're in the middle of a housing crisis, when potentially you could redevelop this and put multifamily or twin homes or other homes on it. I recognize it's a, it's a preserved and it's a prestigious home. It's been there since 100 years. But you could redevelop and put other housing on it or other things, which they've done in Hill Farms and done very strategically and done very well. But you could do other commercial uses. My thought is, go find a space with a commercial, sell the home and go build a commercial property and do that. I develop and do development on the side and understand that. I appreciate that. I just, my concerns are, I do not want to see the city get in the habit of spot-zoning because in legacy neighborhoods and doing that, and would, would strongly recommend the commission, do not approve this and go with the recommendations of staff. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Andrea West. I'm a Kaysville resident. And I actually live in the Hill Farms community just two doors south of the proposed 388 North Angel Street. And I just want to comment about being a resident in this neighborhood that's just right next door. I completely understand the spoken concerns and I really appreciate all those items being, being brought to attention. As we have lived here, and I was actually the designer that helped build this community with Destination Homes, and I really understand the vision and the charm for this historic, historically-designed neighborhood. And the Hills Home is the anchor to that, to this area, to this neighborhood. And when the Hills brought this idea to us, I just felt really honored that they would consider our business to be in this. We have a very small, two-person design team here, my husband and I. And that they would just, we were just honored that we were considered to preserve and maintain the integrity of this historic home. And I think of other historic and beautiful neighborhoods, how often you'll have these beautiful homes and they have small businesses in there and they become a walkable, beautiful staple in that community. And that is our intention for that. I think it could just add a lot of charm and community to this area. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to? All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing portion of this discussion then. And we will come back to the commission for discussion.
I have some comments, Mr. Chairman. I agree with staff. I think this is, you know, my first thought as we got into this, going through the report, is that this really is a bad solution to a problem. It's, you know, it's applying a hammer to, you know, a sledgehammer to a push-in. It just, the, the problem here is the city's codes. I, I doubt there's anybody here who doesn't think that this is a good use. It's a great use. I mean, I, I've had this in my working for cities, I don't know how many times I had somebody come and ask me, can we do swim lessons on this property? And it's a beloved use. People love the neighborhood, you know, by and large. It's, it's usually beloved. And, and a design office in that building is fantastic. I think it's perfect. But to rezone a property, general commercial, to achieve that is the absolute wrong way to do it. And I'd like to, so I'm just going to tell you right now, I am, I, I will vote to not, I will vote to deny this. If, whatever, you know, I'm not in favor of this. I won't support it. And it's not because of the use. Again, the use is great. The whole neighborhood's fantastic. I just think there's a way to accomplish this without rezoning it. And I do think rezoning, as Mr. Lyons pointed out, he is absolutely, pardon the pun, spot-on. You were spot-on, Steve, in your analysis. This is kind of spot-zoning, which generally should be avoided. It's not going to be turned over in court if you did it. It's just the wrong tool. So what I'd like to suggest is that, and I may be alone, I don't speak for everybody when I say it's a great use, especially a home that means so much to the family. That's in your DNA. I had a home like that up in Idaho, our ancestral home, not quite this old. I can't drive by it now. The spirit of the home is gone and it just crushes you. So I, I understand what the family is saying. But I would like to propose a couple of quick ideas. One, a, a tool to do this without changing the zoning would be to change the text, change the ordinance. And that would be to allow as a conditional use in the currently rezoned property that you don't have to live there to have a professional office in a residential building. Now, some people will say, ah, you can't have that, but there's no danger here. It's a huge site. If nobody lives on that and somebody has an office there, so what? What does the impact on the neighbors? There's no impact. Somebody, in fact, it's a glider use to use it the way they're proposing to have an office there. There's nobody at night. It's perfect. They can dress that up, keep the character of the property. I would suggest a text amendment is a much better tool. It's not timely to change the code. You got to go through another process, but, and I, and I, I'm sorry, buddy. I keep bringing up my experience as a former planner, but I worked in a city where we had this exact thing. No one wanted to live in the home on Highland Drive. 30,000 cars. in the home on Highland Drive. Thirty thousand cars a day going in front of that house. Nobody wanted to live in it. It was an older home, and so we created an ordinance. It was called the Professional Office Zone, which allowed residential homes in a residential area to be rezoned, to be used, to keep the character of the home, and allow a daytime office use, and just conditions to make sure that it was secure at night, and less traffic. There's nobody there at night. That's a much better tool. Or to amend the residential zoning we have in place for this, to allow for a professional office that doesn't require occupancy of the home. I think we're really, we're too, it's, it's just too anal-retentive to say you have to live in the home to have an office. A home occupation is not applicable here. It's in a home. It's just not occupied by somebody who lives in it 24/7. So what? So what? I'm telling you, there isn't an impact here. So, there are better tools to accomplish this, and that's all I'll say. I'm not, I'm not in favor of the zone for those reasons and others that have been mentioned.
I'd like to speak to this. I don't, I'm, I'm not as familiar with the tool that you're suggesting. That, I'm interested in it. I think that would be an interesting conversation. But I would like to say, I've had conflicting feelings about this. So, I think initially, a general commercial zone sounds yucky, right, in this neighborhood? I live close to this, to the applicant, to the previous homeowner. For, but I was pleased with the development agreement, kinda took away the concerns, because my initial concern is, that's great, but what happens next? You know, what happens when the design studio goes away and then somebody builds something catastrophic on this, you know, lot? So, the development agreement, I think, is, resolves most of those concerns. For me, the main priority is the preservation of this historic home. And in deference to the Hill family, who it's been in their family for generations, I think they know really how to care for that. I grew up in a historic home, and when my father passed away, my mom had to leave it, and we sold it. But we pursued every op, you know, other option we could. Tried to get an art gallery in it or something that would, you know, ensure that it could be used and preserved. And if that, if that's an option, I would be in favor of that because you could sell it to another, for another residential use, but there's, that's just hard because you don't, you wanna maintain the character of that neighborhood. Like, like was stated, it was kind of built around that. In speaking to the housing crisis, and I think everyone knows that I'm generally pretty in favor of building and high-density, you know, neighborhoods and building more and more smaller, smaller, just for our current situation. But in this case, I would like to make a note that the Hill family has contributed significantly in part of that solution and creating this development on that, on the properties adjacent surrounding it, was all of that, the family farm. And now there's lots and lots of neighborhoods that have helped to contribute to the problem, contribute to solutions to the problem. So, I did wanna make mention of that. One concern is the building, getting the building to code. So, I don't know if the applicant feels that that is, yeah, I'd like to hear, you know, if you feel like that is doable, because that would be one concern.
Yeah. I think it's, it's probably doable within reason. As far as accessibility, that's a simple thing. The front doors of the homes are double doors, so they're, they're wide enough for accessibility. So, we wouldn't need to build a ramp. We have a wraparound porch with sidewalks that access the, the full porch. So, building the ramp and accessibility that way is a simple process with a number of different options, and plenty of parking for handicap areas and zones. If you, if you want me to point out to you on the, on the aerial view, you know, there's a...
Let me, I'll pull up a better aerial for you, Drew.
Okay, thanks.
So, we don't have to look through the filter there. Let me just get to...
Yeah, thank you. So, you can see right here, there's four dedicated parking stalls off the road with this circle that's too, too wide. So, you could have multiple cars park on the circle. The sidewalk, you can't see here, but the sidewalk enters here and comes up around this side of the house. You can see kinda that, it connects all the way in there. So, accessibility could be from the north side of the house, the front door and entryway's right here, where the double front door is, so it's easily accessible. We also have two spots here, another spot here. There's a parking stall right there, and then one right underneath that tree where I'm flashing right now. So, there's plenty of parking on the property for what the proposed use would be, as well as the dedicated parking that's recessed off of Angel Street. Again, I would, I would expect that that's never going to be used ever at all. And then, as far as...
Is that parallel parking?
Yeah, that's parall, this here, yeah. That's parallel parking, yeah. So, as far as the, the question goes, for the, the accessibility of the home, I don't think that's going to be an issue at all, as far as being able to make it accessible for the, I think that was part of the agreement that we talked about. We would obviously have to have somebody come in and with the fire code and have somebody come in and walk through us with, walk through that with us and make sure that we were up to code on that, and happy to go through that with the fire department or whoever it is that would be, the building inspector or whatever. I don't know the process and what that looks like. But, you know, this, yeah, we were happy to go through the process that it would...
So, as far as the interior of the home, is there a lot of changes that would need to be made? Bathrooms or, you know, accessibility with, within? Not really?
No. There's two full bathrooms on the main floor, and a, and a full bathroom on the, on the upstairs level, with an additional bathroom that's accessible if you needed it, just right underneath those trees, right there. So, no, I don't, I don't believe so. Again, I'd be one of those things where, yeah, the building inspector, the, the code person, I don't know the terms. I guess this isn't my wheelhouse. You know, Phil could do it all day, but the, I'm sure they could come in and tell us if it was, if we needed to make an adjustment here or there. But if there was adjustments that need to be made, they'd be pretty minor as far as being able to have access to, to those types of things. So, one other thing that I just wanted to maybe mention here is, again, I, I agree to a point of the, you know, I, I didn't come in trying to look for general commercial as the, as what I wanted to do. I just wanted to sign a conditional use permit that said, you know, Andrea, Andrea West Design. But the other part of this is, there, there isn't another home like this in the area. So, when you talk about setting a precedent, it's not setting a precedent for the surrounding area, because it's, it's unique. It's, it's the only one that, you know, so you, you can't tell me that the, my house just up the road here, that I would be able to come to you and say that, I mean, you could tell me this, but it's not the same type of home. So, it doesn't, it's, it's a different, you know, it's not a 100-year-old home that is trying to be preserved, and we're trying to keep it as a landmark, and we're trying to be able to put the Christmas lights up, and we're trying to maintain the landscaping, and that's the real, the real reason behind it. And so, I get, I get the idea and I get the, but the precedent is that this is a unique, unique to everything else that surrounds it. And I don't think that anybody could argue with that as far as trying to say, "Hey, they got it approved," or, or not.
I've got a question for you.
Yeah.
It's a beautiful subdivision, by the way. I love it. Is that a planned unit development? Is that a PUD?
Yeah. I, well, I guess I don't know what a plan, I, my, 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 my understanding of what a planned unit development, when you just say that to me, would be that a developer came in and laid that out and...
Are there common areas? Is there a homeowners association?
Homeowners Association, yes.
Okay.
This home does not participate in the homeowners association. It's excluded from it.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is, is I'm gonna make a suggestion here. I think you could amend the subdivision plat, include that piece, the piece we're talking about, with the PUD, and then have it as the office, have it as an office or an accessory use to the PUD. You could have a secondary office in there for, like, just a small room for the homeowners association to technically comply, and then make that part of the subdivision. And that is, that's a really good way of thinking about this, if you included that in the plat.
It's included, it's included in the plat, but it's not, it was excluded from the HOA because the, any previous owners that lived within the development were excluded from the, the HOA.
Right. But if you included that parcel in with the plat, then it becomes part of the HOA, and then the HOA and the subdivision has the need for an office.
So, explain to me the difference of, because it is included in the plat.
It is included in the plat?
But it's excluded from the HOA. Yes, included in the plat, in the, the development plan, the land of this, this property was included in the, the entire subdivision.
Well, in all sorts of creative subdivisions, even here in Utah, Las Vegas, wherever, you have a gated subdivision, and they have a little office. They have a little place for leases, okay? And what I'm saying is, you include this in the plat, connect it with the plat or make it part of the HOA, you could have a small office in that building while that happened to change the zoning to say, "Oh, yeah, this is part of the Hill Farms subdivision."
But would that allow them to have this office tenant in there?
Yeah.
Well, you could do it as, and as an amendment to the plat.
Oh, we're too rigid.
That's a, that's a possibility. I think some of the other ideas that I've come up with, just as we've been talking or here and thinking about this a little bit, you know, I kinda like what Paul has been talking about, about the ideas of maybe putting some provisions into the existing zoning code. I kinda thought we could, another couple of ideas. One is, Paul, this is, thanks again to your fair community that you worked in with the Cottonwood Mall site, where the courts have now said, and we have provisions with regard to development agreements. The door is basically wide open on development agreements. You can write a development agreement to say about anything you want. It just has to go through the legislative process.
That's right.
So, I mean, in essence, what you could do in this case is, we could write a development agreement that would say, "We would allow this." And then, if it goes here to the planning commission hearing, goes to the council, they approve it. Bingo.
Yeah.
It's done. And you, you've not created anything else in the zoning code. You've created something here for a development agreement for one particular property.
Yeah.
That, to me, doing planning by development agreement kinda opens the door to something I don't know that I'm real comfortable with, because then it's almost like, why do we even have zoning if that's the way we're gonna develop property? So, you could do essentially the same thing. We have a couple of communities in this state that sort of do that already, but they, they put them into their zoning code. The most notable one is Orem City. If you look at Orem, they have, they have a ton of these little properties that are zoned with these designations, and you're looking at them going, "I don't even know what that means." Well, that's, they've come up with these kinds of provisions for individual properties. They've written them into the code. They create a specific code or zone just for that, and then they, they designate that on the zone. It's, it's essentially the same as doing a development agreement, but you put it into your code and on your zoning map. So, those are a couple of ideas of things maybe we could do.
Yeah.
But this idea of doing this as part of the, if this is a, a PUD, a PRUD, wow, that might open another possibility. I think what it really means is, we got a bunch of ideas here we could take a look at.
But the, but the zone, in my opinion, is not, is not the solution, but making this, making, having the PUD with an office. All sorts of subdivisions have an office, a multipurpose room or whatever. That way, you include it in there. You don't have to go through a zoning process. Either that or change the text, or do what you did. Do what you're talking about, Will. If you do development agreements for all sorts of stuff, you can do it for any property. And the city does it with almost every process, project that comes through here has a development agreement.
Well, yeah. I mean, that's, that's happening all around the state now. We're doing a lot of it, so.
Yep.
So, none of these properties are zoned through the PRUD?
Oh, okay. All right.
It's not a PUD?
No. And there's no development agreement that exists, to my knowledge.
On the county website, it says we are. And I can show you that.
Is it all R-114?
What?
You see what I'm getting at? Was this the mother property?
Yeah.
Well, see, when we used to do this kinda stuff, the, the mother property, where the old home was, and when they split off everything like an orchard in the back for, for residential development, we would allow them to either include the old home on it or not. But generally, we'd say, "You have to subdivide that or you have to include it." And that way, would give them a clubhouse. It would give them a leasing space. It would give them a multipurpose space as part of that subdivision.
But then, doesn't the HOA have to support it financially?
Yeah.
The neighborhood has to pay for it, as opposed to the tenant.
Yeah. But them, as the property owner, they could be part of the HOA and keep doing what they're do, they're maintaining it now, aren't they? So, if the property is already maintaining the property, have them join the HOA in the subdivision, operate it as part of the PUD, and allow for some space in that building for whatever. To, it would allow them to have, to do exactly what they're doing, which is to have a, an accessory use as part of the PUD. I mean, is this really about maintaining the property? No, it's already maintained. It's about allowing some flexibility, and it's the mother property.
Financially, it really is about maintaining the property.
They're in a new home now, so they want to have some financial recourse to be able to maintain and keep the property, right?
Right. So, look at this. Does, do, does anybody in this subdivision have access to the pool?
When they ask me, yeah.
Okay, when they ask you. But, but if you make that property as part of the PUD, part of the subdivision, now...
But I don't want everybody to have access.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, they, anybody who asks, any of our neighbors who asks, yes, they, they...
Then, then that...
But, but if we, if we make it a community property...
No, not make it a community property. If you, if you allow people to ask you, so you could allow people to sign up, it could still be used. If anybody from that subdivision has a right to ask, and it could be used here and there, there's nothing that says you have to use it 24/7 or it has to be open certain hours. That would be up to the property owner. I'm trying to link this property with what's already there, because that opens to the preservation of the home, and you don't have to go through some special approval for the use of the pool. I, I just...
Who doesn't have...
You think outside the box here. And I, I've seen a lot of this, but that's a creative way. That mother piece, in my opinion, should have been included. If it had been, you'd already have that office you set up, and you wouldn't have to be coming in here to ask for it.
When you say, "If it had been," I don't understand. It is included, but we've lived in it. It's, it's just not a paying member of the HOA. It's part of the development plat.
And if you made it part of the HOA?
Then it's just like all the other homes, is my understanding.
How would that allow them to bring in the design business if the house is still unoccupied?
So, my apologies...
Those lease, those lease offices in these gated subdivisions or subdivisions all over, they're not occupied. There's nobody who lives in it. It's part of the development, the overall development.
It is, it is done through a PRUD, but I stand by the other comment. To my knowledge, no development agreement exists anywhere for this development.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's probably right, because it probably predated...
So, you could do one, then. You could do one.
Yeah, you, yeah. I mean, you could amend it.
You could, that's what I'm saying. Think outside the box here. How could you make this property part of that and therefore allow it without having to be lived in? That's ridiculous. Why do you have to live in this old home to keep it used? It's a better neighbor if it's not actually lived in, if it's quiet most of the night. There's nobody grilling out here. There's nobody with their music...
That's the point of what, why we brought the businesses that we brought to it. You know, like, the reality of it is, like, this will be less traffic, less noisy, I mean, than a family living there.
That's what, that's my point.
And so, I, but, but it... And so, I, but, but, like I said, the way that it stands right now, my options are, apply for a general commercial rezone.
Yep. And, and I will never, ever, as a planning commissioner, support that.
I wouldn't either.
Never, ever, under any circumstance, to rezone for that when there are other creative ways to do it, including amending the text. My sense is, you're fearing some kind of financial or legal problem by hooking these together and you're gonna be for, that's not the point. The point is to think creatively about how that property can be used the way you want to, without having to zone it commercially. That is the absolute worst way to do that. It sends the wrong message.
My, my fear of what you suggested with the, the homeowners association is that it becomes, um, an office and a community property.
That could be determined by the property owner. You can determine how much it is or how little it is. No, no city goes to a PUD with a clubhouse and a leasing office or a ping pong table room and tells them, I've done tons of these with so many different, with several different cities. The city does not prescribe what that PUD has to do in that clubhouse area. It's just a common area. They determine how much it's used.
Okay.
That would be between the property owner and those homeowners. You could write it narrowly so that once a month, there could be a family party in there. Once a month, the pool could be used by a group. It would, because it could be done by your own agreement or through a development agreement from the city. But the rezone is an absolutely worst way to consider this, and I, I just can't support it.
Well, and so I think the bottom line really from our discussion here is that, I mean, at least, I know I wouldn't, doesn't sound like Paul would. I don't know about the others. I don't think I'd support a rezone.
Nope.
But it sounds like there are options. And, you know, we don't, we, we're not necessarily gonna determine what those options or what the best option is here tonight, but it sounds like there's the possibility for other options of how to deal with this.
Yep. And the mid, and the middle option would be to just amend the ordinance. Just amend the ordinance to allow a property like this, you can write it so narrowly so that it can't be abused. You know, so in the zone, what is it, the RA zone? Add a conditional use in the RA zone that you can have a residential office or professional office, and then write the parameters for which it could be allowed.
And I, okay, I will go-
That's easy to do.
If you guys, if, if you're all in the agreement that it's not gonna move forward, which I haven't heard that yet, so I'm not gonna give up on it, but that, my, my rebuttal to that is like, that, to me, sets a precedent just as what, just as much as what I'm asking for here, e- even more so.
Oh, not even close.
If you're gonna allow anybody to just have a, a home office in their, you know, in any home.
No.
Yeah, I mean, it does do that.
The city writes it narrowly so that it can't be applied to everyone.
Yeah.
I've written these kinds of things. I, I was told, I'll give you an example. I worked in Centerville 25 years ago. They were terrified that they were gonna have to allow a sexually oriented business, because federal law requires cities to allow a location for what's called an SOB, and Wolf knows about this.
I don't know what you're talking about, Paul.
Remember that?
I do, I'm-
So, here, here's what I'm saying. So, the city, very conservative town, all of Davis, most Davis County is, right? They said, Paul, we don't want to allow this. And I said, you have to. Well, how can we, how can we make it so that it has the least impact? So, they just said, Paul, you write us something that we will approve that will allay our fears. So, I wrote an amendment to the ordinance that basically used geographical points around the city, Wolf in the, in the business part. And I ca, I got it written so that it had to be so far from the nearest freeway, from the nearest public facility, from the nearest. And the way it worked out, there was a one-half acre parcel in the entire city where it could be built, and it was vacant. And it stood up. Our city attorney said, brilliant, you did it. I said, I did my best. And so, the city said, in that zone, this is where we will allow the federally required, if somebody applies for it, SOB. And it worked. And I'm saying, you can write, you can make a zone very restrictive. Somebody can challenge it, but it's a legislative action. It just doesn't open the whole city up for people to using their home as an office, but you can write it and you can write justifications for it. One of them is, you're on Angel Street. That's a collector, okay? That's how we wrote the one in, in Holiday. We wrote, well, it's called a professional office zone. We have people who are walking away from old cottages on Island Drive. Hundred-year-old buildings. They're saying, don't wanna live there. We said, well, okay, council, how about if we, and because somebody said, hey, that would make a nice office. What, I'm an architect. I would like to go, exactly, this kind of interior design use. I'm an accountant. This is a family property. Can I use that old house for an office during the day? And we wrote it, got a whole zone just for allowance. You can either put it in the zone or write a new zone for it. But the rezone is, and-
You could write something for the preservation of a historic property.
I'm retired, so.
Just a thank you to the applicant for, for bringing this forward and, and looking for a proper solution. As a part of the staff report, did I hear correctly that if the home were rented and occupied, that a major home occupation being permit would be allowed?
Uh, I don't think I addressed that in staff report, but I did in the presentation. So, our home occupation code would allow, for swimming, the business owner doesn't have to live there.
Thank you.
But for the other home occupations, the business owner has, like, it has to be occupied by the business owner. So, um, yes, it would be allowed through a conditional use permit, through the home occupation if the business owner lived on the property.
Thank you. I think what you're witnessing, I can only speak for myself, but there's a desire to find a way. But the proposed, what we currently have to work with, um, I've got professional planners to my right and left, but from my prior city experience, I would not, could not, would not support a spot zone. So, while we're all looking for remedy, uh, this, I would vote no, uh, on this question. But it's not because I, um, I'm against the current use and, um, I'm almost certain my granddaughters have been in your pool. And, uh, you know, my, my step- Andrea stepped out to take a call, but my stepdaughter thinks she's a lovely person and used to be your neighbor. Um, I'm not sure what part of the Hill tribe she belongs to, but Megan is a dear, Megan Cooney is a dear friend. So, um, I want a solution. I will vote no tonight. Okay?
Thank you. Yeah, just to add, uh, some of my thoughts. I, I agree with all the comments in that I think this is a great fit, that it would be a great use of the property. If, if that's what it takes to keep this property viable, like, I think it's, it's fantastic. Um, all the things that I hear, I, I love the house, and that's, you know, from someone who's never, I mean, I drive past it, and yet it's, it's, you know it. You know the house. And, um, I think, listening to the, the, the people who are in the business and know the stuff, I have some of the same questions that I, I imagine are going through your mind with some of these other ideas, um, fears, and, and, and I, so I think there's, you know, there'd have to be a process, to kinda get, work through that and answer all of those questions. But I agree that the, the path of rezoning to commercial is, I don't think the desired path for the interest of the city, um, or the neighborhood. Um, I think that the development agreement went a long ways to kinda fencing in, um, the concerns. Uh, but if there are better methods, if we, if there's still a path that can get you where you wanna get, uh, I, I think that, what I've heard, you know, that there could be some very, um, better, better paths. Um, I, I would love for you to be successful in, in being able to have the businesses there, um, in maintaining the home as it is. I mean, it's, it's a treasure. Um, but yeah, the rezone, I think is a difficult way to, to handle it. Um, and of course, you know, we recommend to the, the city council, we can't speak for how they would vote, but, uh, I think there's some established fears, you know, that have come from other, you know, experience in, in other cities and things like that. And I'm also very, uh, I'd, I wouldn't feel good recommending approval of this at this time either, so.
Mr. Chairman, um, if it's in order, I'd move that we recommend, um, denial to the city council. And, and I'm sure staff will pass along the planning commission's, I believe, almost, uh, what will probably be consensus, that we have no objection to the current use, how the home appears, how it's being used. And, um, there are solutions that are available to the applicant, whether occupied by a family member or rented. But, um, as presented for a rezone, I would move that we send a recommendation to deny to the city council.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion to the motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to add, um, I will be supporting the motion, but I wanna make clear that I'm not opposed to what the applicant is trying to do, and I think we can find other solutions, other ways to accomplish it.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with that statement, myself. If we're ready to vote.
Call the question?
We'll call the question.
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
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 So, the motion carries, the motion to recommend denial of the rezone. Would that also get to the city council on June 5th?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as the applicant is available for June 5th. And obviously, there's been a lot of dialogue tonight, so I think we could, based on that, talk about, um, some of the options that were discussed. See if you wanna continue on with the rezone. And, you know, we, we can, we can have a discussion about that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, don't decide tonight.
Don't need to rush, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, talk with Melinda about it.
Yeah. But otherwise, if, if you're available June 5th, that's when we would get on the agenda.
I, I would just say, don't get, don't be discouraged. There is a way to make this happen, just not this way. Everybody here, I think, wants to see that. I, there's no way we're not supportive of the use. It's a light use. It should be allowed. It's just, that's, it's, it's not your fault. It's the code's fault. We have zoning codes that don't cover every situation. That's why zoning codes are huge like this. Somebody's always got a different way of proposing something and the code didn't think of that. Well, in this case, you can get the code to consider it. And you've got really good staff planners here that can help you with that. So, that's what I recommend. Work with your staff. I'll bet your council would be very supportive too, of an alternate path.
All right, we will move on to agenda item number five, approval of minutes from the March 13th Planning Commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would move we approve the minutes as presented.
Second the motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, catching up. Approval of the minutes from the March 27th Planning Commission meeting. We did not get these approved because of the lack of a full quorum.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I also abstain. So.
If we only have three voting.
I think we're still okay. By law, say, it has to be a, um-
It's still a majority of the-
A majority of the quorum present. So, we're okay. Yeah.
And agenda item number seven, approval of minutes from our April 24th meeting.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Abstain.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And abstaining again.
Abstentions.
So, we had three.
All right. Motion carries. Other matters, take it away.
Well, we're still talking about our small area plan project that has been going on. Um, I've actually been pretty pleased to hear some of the numbers that we've had on the surveys. Last count, I think they said we, they had like, was it 364 survey responses?
I talked to Liz today. I saw her up at the conference. She's thinking over 400 at this point.
Okay, great, great. So, we're, um, in fact, that is a reminder, we need to do another public-
Well, that's good, yeah. We're getting there.
We need another Facebook post with, uh, pushing the survey out. So, the survey's open through May 12th. And, um, I do also have a draft of the market analysis that has been sent over. I haven't read through that yet, but we're plugging away. We've identified, um, stakeholders that we'd like to bring in and have interviews with. So, that would be, you know, large property owners or property, um, that may, well, let's see, businesses, larger properties, or even properties that might just be kind of prime for redevelopment or development. And other than that, I, uh, have been holding the fort down while we've had Ms. McNamara at the planning conference where, um, she's taking great notes. We will have a planning commission meeting on May 22nd. Um, we've already posted a public hearing notice for revising Title 18 and 19, which is our subdivision code. Public Works Department has gone through a process, I think, of updating some of the stormwater, I think, modeling in the city, and we wanted to make some changes to the subdivision code. So, that will for sure be on the agenda at this point. Um, we may have conditional use permits that come in, but for sure, the, uh, those public hearings on Title 18 and 19 will be on. We wouldn't have any other rezones or anything else that would be requiring a public hearing. So, that's really all I have. Is there, am I?
It is a big deal. Congratulations.
It, I heard it was announced two different times at the APA conference, so.
What?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. American.
He's from Chicago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that is pretty cool. Pope Louis XIV?
Yes.
Leo, sorry. Leo.
I have to tell you, I was so, this is now a number of years ago. This was prior to Pope Francis the, I forget what his name was. Benedict, yeah. When he was, when he became Pope, I was in Rome when that happened.
Oh, really?
And my wife, who is a great, she loves art and wants to see all the art museums, and she was really looking forward to seeing the Sistine Chapel. And we couldn't go in the Sistine Chapel because those darn cardinals were using it. But we were, we were-
Darn cardinals.
We, we had just gone out to dinner, uh, one evening early, and, um, we were at the Sidewalk Cafe, sitting and, and just starting dinner. And all of a sudden, bells are just ringing everywhere in Rome. It was like cacophony. And we're going, what is going on? And then people are starting to yell and say, there's a new pope that's been picked. And so, and, and I mean, that was kinda interesting. Kinda fun to be there when that happened. Yeah.
I had a similar experience, not really, but I was in San Francisco when Jerry Garcia died. And I think he's from San Francisco. Slightly different, maybe vastly different, but there you have it.
He's the Pope of San Francisco.
He might have been.
Question about the meeting on the, uh, June 12th. So, is that taking place of a planning commission meeting or?
So, yes, thank you for bringing that up, Chair Packer. We will have on June 12th a joint city council planning commission meeting to go over those initial findings of the small area plan. So, that would be, um, what they call the existing conditions, where they've evaluated, this is kind of the, you know, whatever, whatever those existing conditions are. So, the market, um, even traffic, those types of things. Um, I would assume they will go over some of the survey results and, um, comments from the stakeholder meeting. So, I think the answer to that question is still unknown at this point. It depends on what other applications come in. So, it could be, if, if we have a need to have, uh, you know, of, of, an agenda with other items that come in, um, then maybe we do that at 6:00 PM, or the joint meeting at 6:00 PM, and start planning commission regularly at 7:00. If we have a light agenda, we may just- a light agenda, we may just replace the whole meeting. And I can kind of navigate that as things come in and try and steer people, or still steer applicants away from that meeting. So, I think it would be great, I mean, I'd like to have as much opportunity and time for the Planning Commission and the council to review and discuss that content. So, if we can kind of have that goal of maybe replacing the meeting would be ideal. But I also don't want to put applicants off if they're waiting for business licenses and conditional use permits as well. So, we'll have to just kind of wait and see what comes in.
Sounds good.
Question, Melinda. Is there a reason it has to be held the same night as the Planning Commission meeting? Can't you hold it on a different night? Have a special meeting?
We could. It's just, generally speaking, the council and the Planning Commission already kind of has their Thursday nights planned. So, we could look at doing a different date as well if the need arises. I know the June 5th city council agenda was already packed. They'll be adopting, I think there's going to be budget discussions that night too. So, if we need to pivot and pick a different date, then we can do that too, but...
I'm not, I'm not trying to direct you, tell you, but I, I know that, you know, having worked for cities, they're always so busy. But sometimes, one thing that I found worked well was, you put it on your website that you're going to have a special meeting and draw some attention to it as a special meeting, and have it literally the night before. So, it's back-to-back. That can be tiring for people who are there, but it's also pretty effective because you get it out of the way. Or you have it on an off week, a following, on a Wednesday. We even had meetings on Monday nights. We had public meetings on Monday nights sometimes because having to work around whatever. So, just a suggestion that, you know, flexibility. I'm more likely to come that way.
If we're complete with the calendar, Mr. Chairman, I would move we adjourn.
So, moved.
We are adjourned. Thank you.